Call the meeting to order at seven oh one. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, first thing on the agenda would be the public hearing.
You open that at what, seven oh two?
Yes. Okay, tonight's public hearing is pretty straightforward. Um, as you know, a few years back, Minnesota passed a law that does law for two AM liquor licenses. Um, it is required by state statute that if a bar or restaurant wants the two AM liquor license, they need to pay a fee to the state, they need to get permission from the state. So tonight's, uh, public hearing is looking at amending chapter one ten of the Janesville City Code, which allows and clarifies that process for, for bars. Once upon a time, we did have a two AM bar in Janesville, we just presently don't right now. But this, uh, language, the amendment just clarifies that. How was that for a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, we have to do this twice before adoption, right?
Nope, this can, we can do this one.
This one?
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
For twenty twenty-two dash.
Pretty upfront.
Yep.
So, motion by John, second by Jim.
Yep.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All ohs, that's three oh.
You have, uh, your folder there?
Yep.
Has it been there to sign?
I would approve the agenda and move for approval.
No, second, yeah.
Uh, all in favor of approval of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three oh. Consent agenda.
All right, your consent agenda tonight has the minutes from our August eighth council meeting, um, and the revenues, the receivables summary sheet is in there. And then we do have, uh, our payables that total a little over forty-three thousand dollars for tonight's meeting. I just wanted to mention a couple payables here, uh, the disc golf course, the tees. You see a couple invoices in there for those. Um, and then you do notice Mankato Fire and Safety, um, each year FAD, Zomer, um, inspects all of our extinguishers.
Oh.
So that's what that was.
Really?
And then, um, I think it's the second to last page, uh, we do have an invoice to Stan Tech Consulting, that is the company that is working on our housing study. So there's a partial pay for that, for the work that they've done to date. So that's in tonight's agenda as well. That's all I have.
I'd move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm Steve, I was in Thursday.
Okay.
Uh, we don't have.
You have to vote, I think.
Yeah.
Oh, do I?
Eighty-three.
Alright. Motion.
Yeah.
That's three oh. Uh, public forum, do we have anybody here to speak through public forum? Public forum. Deep?
Um, nothing real earth shattering, I just wanted to let you know I was riding my bike around town and out to the lake and had all kinds of people using the, um, the disc golf out there yesterday and very much enjoying themselves. And I'm excitedly watching the street projects get moving along and thank you, um, administration and council folks for making sure that our streets are in good shape. I appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody else for public forum, we'll move on. Notices and communications.
Yes, you have a mailing in front of you on the table. That's all I have for that.
Council reports.
Nothing for me.
I got, uh, four of them.
Four of them.
Buckets, he's been busy.
Well, I, no, I, sure. You can't be the catalyst if you don't make things happen. Anyway, the, uh, disc golf, I got a call from, uh, or message from Gary Mittelstadt the other day, the signs will be, are going to the printer, so we should have the signs up in the next two weeks. So the disc golf should be completed and he's hoping to have a, he's hoping to have an opening ceremony or, uh, something, uh, first week of October, which will be the anniversary of the Legion twelve here in Janesville.
Nice, they did a nice job.
It should be completed, uh, here in the next thirty days. Secondly, uh, EBA met and they, uh, are moving forward with the housing study. Uh, they had a best tours, uh, uh, best, what's it called? It's a, is a business advocate group, uh, on the tenth. Um, they are also pursuing, uh, the idea of the Institute for Housing and we'll be having a meeting in the next week or two. And they've got that ten thousand dollar grant, you'll see in your, um, in your items from Clinton. And they have started that Stanton Group is going to do the, or Spanton, they're doing a, a housing study. We're hoping to get that done by the first of the year so that we can make some plans for next year and, uh, move forward. Anyway, that's the idea on that. They would like to know, and it was brought up that they had some daycare meetings and they ended up with one person in the last two or three meetings. And so, we would like to see if Mike Roy would give us a pitch that they would really like to pursue the daycare, but if no one stepped forward, it's really hard to pursue it with a committee of one. And it's a county commissioner that's sitting on it. So, anyway, they wanted to know what our wishes were and I told them that I would deliver the message and hopefully we could get it on the website, we could get it, uh, advertised as much as possible, that people need to step forward if they want to pursue daycare in Janesville. And I'm sure Mike Roy will, will get the word out on that. Thirdly, uh, the, uh, Park Road Plaza had a meeting here last week. They are doing well money wise. They are looking for, uh, put cameras, security cameras in. They were wondering if the council was going to commit stimulus money and I could not commit to that. I said, we will bring it up when we're dealing with that stimulus money later in this year after the budget process is done and probably during the winter months. The elevator came in at, uh, two hundred and one to two hundred and seventy-three thousand and they decided which bid to take. So they're hoping to get construction started this fall on that, the new elevator.
So they had two bids on it then, the two seventy-one, two oh one?
They had five. Two oh one is the bottom, two seventy.
Oh, that's the range, I got you, yep.
Yep, the range was, uh, seventy-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Uh, they're looking to replace the parking lot and so they didn't know if stimulus money is available for that also, I can't, I couldn't give them. Uh, and then they wanted to know one thing. What is the relationship with Park Road with the city? And I said, I would have to talk to Jason Moran, I would have to talk to, uh, look at the city charter and see how that was designed. City built it, uh, we own the building, but I'm not sure beyond that, so that may be a, a discussion for later on with the city council, like October, November, sometime just to get a clarity of that, because I don't think we're prepared to discuss that tonight. But I'd like to put it on the agenda so we will discuss it.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, and that, and all these other things pertaining to that. Um, let's see, what was the other meeting?
Park Board.
Park Board, we had Park Board last night, or, uh, five-thirty is, is tonight, and they came up with a suggestion for the, uh, budget and it's in our budget concerns tonight. We also discussed the timetable for the next four, four years, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and a little bit about twenty-six, so we are setting some parameters or priorities of when we want to do things and getting, so the winter months we'll look at what they cost and get an idea whether we can afford them and then how long it would take us to, to do those projects.
Yep.
And I, uh, looked at all of the parks in town and this was probably the most needy and then we're looking at, Lakeview Park is the second most needy, but we've also got other items on the list, so I'm hoping maybe next meeting I can get that, uh, put together and give you guys a list of what our next, our.
Priority list.
Our priority list is.
Yep.
So, that completes my week. I was a little busy.
Very good, thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
Administrator report.
Yeah. Okay, in your packet you have the cash balance report, which is dated last Friday. Um, the Minnesota River Area Agency on Aging, you remember the, that area, that group and the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, um, were awarded a grant for a variety of computer equipment and training and things like that for residents. Um, we did get the money and if you recall, last October, the council approved the city being the fiscal agent for that grant. So anyway, last week we got the money and now I'm working with, with the area agency on getting all the invoices, so you'll see some of those coming out here in the next couple of weeks.
Are they going to get it all spent or they only spent about half of it for that computer program?
I think it's all spent, I guess, I don't really know yet, I don't have all of the invoices.
I, I could maybe shuffle, like, I don't know exactly what the finances are, but, um, there was some money left that, that was not yet spent, um, but the plan was to, um, to take a good look and spend as much as we could on additional equipment that will help the program continue to move forward.
Right, okay.
So, and I added to a couple of devices that will, um, add to the inventory of what we've got, will help them keep doing that class.
It's a good plan.
Yeah, and, and the class is, is going to segue over and be offered by, um, community education.
Right.
So.
And Andrea's involved with that group, correct?
Yeah.
Community Ed from the high school?
Yes.
Yes.
And she was on the, the community action team for the grant as well.
Right, right, thank you.
Um, rest of the report here, we have the annual golf tournament that we, that we put on every summer, so that invite is in your packet today. Um, Minnesota Housing Partnership, I'm not going to repeat what Jim just said because he did a fantastic job of reporting on it, so I'm going to skip through that. Um, last week I was at the, the League Minnesota Cities Board Meeting and just want to give you a couple updates here, the league did adopt their budget, um, there's a three percent dues increase. They had thought, they had thought about doing a three and a half percent, but they, they got it down to a three percent dues increase, so that's good. Um, and they are going to form a policy committee on this THC, um, information, you know, are we going to have a special session? I did actually find an ordinance today, a city, uh, north of us is looking at a draft of an ordinance, so I started reading that today, interesting.
Right, yeah.
So, yeah, we're working on it, but you know, we do have a moratorium and.
Right.
When you have a moratorium, you know, you're supposed to be actively working on it, so that's, that's what we're doing.
Very good.
Quite an article in the paper about a week ago.
Yeah.
Gave a lot of information about it, about Mankato and North Mankato, are they dealing with it and?
Yep.
Aye, thanks.
You bet. Um, and I'm not going to look at THC next week, still be on vacation. That's the last part of my report.
Motion to approve the administrator report?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Department heads, public works and sewer, Joe?
Yep. It's not sewers, I go with it, it's just.
No.
One oh one?
Yep.
Yep.
So, do you want to talk budgets with Joe now or do you want him to do his department head report or can we put it all together?
We can put it all together if that works.
We're new, new business here in a minute or two, does that work for you?
Just wait till we get there then? Or you want to do it all now? Or wait till we get there?
Yeah, let's just wait, we'll do this whole business first.
Yeah, okay.
So attached in your packet is the application for Jerry Shendel Senior, he is applying to defer his special assessment on the Allen Street project. So you have in your packet the, the document that we send to the county once it's approved. So Mr. Shendel's assessment would be deferred for, it's up to thirty years is what the state statute calls for. Or if the property ownership changes names, then it, then it's paid off.
Paid off.
So tonight's resolution will approve Mr. Shendel's application.
I'll make the motion, twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Has that ever been denied?
Not here.
Not here, no. Pretty much laid out pretty good and.
Yep.
You eyeing on that then, Jim?
I do.
That's three oh. Uh, new business, review portion of twenty twenty-three general fund budget.
All right, I'm just going to take the budget off. Okay, so there's two budget sheets to look at here tonight, one is the street department and then the second sheet is the parks department. Um, if you look at the street department, the first page, you'll see there's a four point three percent increase in the budget, which is, that's a good number. Um, Joe, do you have anything you'd like to point out, I guess?
Yeah, I guess just kind of going down the list here, I mean, salary wage is all kind of basic increases there, um, just a couple of things I wanted to point out, vehicle gas, um, just kind of given following the market of, uh, fuel, that's, uh, we're going to bump that a little bit next year. Um, pouring materials, we're patching material gravel, we're going to drop that a little bit. Um, another big item would be the tree removal, earlier this year, that old ash board was detected on Lake Park. Yeah, currently in town, we have over, close to like three hundred ash trees, just boulevards and parks alone. Um, so we're looking to maybe increase that line a little bit, just to, we're going to be monitoring, I don't think we're just going to clear cut all the ash trees in town, boulevards, just we're going to be monitoring it, taking down, uh, troubled trees as they, they don't or stick, uh, and just keep an eye on it moving forward, so.
Is there any in town yet?
What's that?
The ash boards, it isn't here?
I'm sure there's, they, they haven't officially detected it, but it's just a mile outside of town, so.
Yeah.
It's like the guy from the state said, if it's found, it's going to be within two miles.
Right.
So it's a guarantee.
I see they just quarantine Sherwood County.
Yep, they did, yep.
Basically all of them. Something that's sold, isn't it, for.
Yeah.
I know the city to the west of here, they started out by taking out every fourth boulevard, um, ash tree.
Yep.
And the following year, you're doing every third and replacing them and, and they, they've been at that for probably three years now.
Oh, really?
So they, they tried getting on it right away to get some, you know, some bigger trees.
Yep.
Started and, you know, slowly start phasing them out, but.
Makes sense, yeah, absolutely. And then just moving down, no real other changes, um, miscellaneous line, we'll be looking at a new plaza, snow plaza for our skid roller, um, the one we have currently is pretty, pretty hatched, and then also a little rush more to put behind a tractor to kind of maintain some of the neglected properties, city properties. Um, and then just another thing I'm going to keep looking at, that five-thirty line, that road paint is the CIP, that two hundred model, I think is just an absolute beautiful thing for the city, I mean, you know, it overlays a chip seal, um, and just keeping on it and keeping, improving the existing roads that they already have before they deteriorate to cars, so I think that's absolutely huge, so.
Yes.
Questions on the street, proposed budget?
Clinton News Pass, what's been the, what's been the increase that we've been kind of looking at?
Um, the tax levy itself ranges anywhere from, what, three to five percent, I think one year it went down a little, um, you're going to jump off your chair here in a couple minutes and I tell you what the preliminary budget.
You talking overall or just street?
Uh, just, well, I mean.
Oh, I guess I couldn't tell you, just street, I was talking overall.
Sure. Thank you, Joe.
Yep.
Parks, thank you, Joe. Parks Department, it's a smaller budget, obviously, um, that's on your second page there. And really, the biggest, uh, change in that budget is we updated our insurance numbers a little bit, as you can tell, property insurance is down, but the big item would be that miscellaneous line. Uh, the park board has requested that we increase that from forty thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand for parking equipment.
Whoa.
They're pretty aggressive with what they want to do.
Oh, I guess so, eighty-seven percent increase, yeah.
Do you have anything, Joe, with the parks that you?
I mean, that's pretty, pretty set in drive, just kind of maintaining what we're currently doing and then.
Yep.
Yeah, obviously the park board is looking at, will soon bring the improvements, so.
Okay, well, we'll have to, probably have to do a little talking about that on.
Yeah, eighty thousand. I need to do a lot of talking. All in one year, I mean, it was dispersed over four or five years maybe.
I, I think part of the rationale was, uh, they don't think that there's been much money spent, uh, be part of the last year, and they wanted to jump in and do some pretty significant improvements on three or four different parks all at once.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And the one out here on the, it took two years of budget to get the north, the Elky Park, it took eighty thousand dollars, it took two years of, of full budget to just put the equipment in that one. And this one, it's going to probably cost that or more. So they thought that, that they were, our feeling was that if it's going to take eighty to do this, we have no money to do so, anything, any of the other projects, we're looking at a lot of different recreational projects throughout the city. So, that's, uh, uh, what the number we came up with and if we can fit it within the budget and we can make it work with the city.
Yeah, we'll talk.
It's great, but I think, uh, we need to, uh, they needed, needed to make a statement that they think that recreation is a very important thing in Janesville because we're better in community and the better parks we have, the better chance we have of landing people. In conjunction with that, the, the housing study, if we can get new subdivisions started, the better our parks look, the better chance we have of filling them up too. So, it, it's a multi-faceted thought process that we went through and I know there's a large number, however, uh, I think we should consider it at least more than forty thousand and if the hundred and twenty makes us choke too hard, I still think we need to do more than forty. So, you know, a hundred and twenty on a, on a budget of what are we, uh, two and a half million? Approximately.
Uh, yeah.
We're close to that. Uh, that's not a, a large number, but it is a large number when you look at where we come from, so.
Sure.
Uh, that's the rationale behind that number, and that they do have logic behind it, isn't, isn't just a pie in the sky idea, so.
No.
Yeah, you, you brought some facts.
So thanks for listening about it.
Yep.
Okay. Do we want to do that or wait till final budget to deal with that number?
Um, I.
Only three of us.
I know, and I would like to, like to talk to the council about what our tax levy is going to look like.
Right.
If we don't change, if we keep everything as is.
Okay.
We're looking at like a twenty-two percent increase in our.
Oh.
Tax levy this year.
Skip to you there.
It's better.
Yeah. Might need a little more.
More, more. So, um, I guess my question to you is, our debt service did go up a little bit, uh, the capital reserves for vehicles, that went up a little bit, the budget itself went up a little bit, so we're looking at a, a twenty-two percent increase and quite honestly, I would not want to present that to the public.
How many dollars?
No.
Twenty-two percent, that'd be about four hundred dollars.
Um, with everything as is right now, our tax levy went up about two hundred and fifty thousand. Our tax levy this year is just a little over a million and right now it's one point three million.
And so if we, if we could get it down to that ten, eleven, because inflation is going to, is going to kick our butts next year, I'd like to have some room. If we could, uh, I can justify ten to eleven pretty easily in my own mind. If we can get it down to that, then you're talking about a hundred and some thousand increase, right? That would be a, that would be a thought in my mind that inflation is going to run at nine percent or more this year and depending on what it does for the rest of this year and beginning of next, I think we could be up in that ten, eleven, twelve percent inflation within six to twelve months. And if that's the case, then if we don't have any, any room, then, then we're, uh, many of our departments are going to run short.
Yep.
So we have to be a little proactive on this and if it's eleven percent, twelve percent, whatever we decide, I think we can justify that because of the economic times we're starting into. But that's just one opinion.
Yeah.
I'd like to have all, the full council before we make any rash decisions on this.
Right. Do you want me to, for our next council meeting then, to have a scenario where we're at what ten percent looks like versus what twenty-two percent looks like?
It'll be October.
Absolutely.
Oh, we need to do it by the end of September.
Alright, so then.
It has to go in, but then you can still chop it down from there.
Right.
You just can't go over it.
Right, right.
So if we go in at ten percent, we can't go any higher than that, but we could still chop it down if we wanted to.
So if we go into twenty-two, we can still.
Well, I wouldn't do that. Just going to ring off.
Right, and let me explain, when you do your preliminary levy in September and send it to the county, that's the number that your proposed property tax statement is going to show.
That's what they'll send out.
So the residents are going to get that in the mail before December and they're going to, even though we know that it went down, they're going to see that high number.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Should we shoot? Do we between now and then?
Between now and the next couple of weeks, should we shoot for like a fifteen percent?
We do have another meeting here in two weeks, don't we?
Yep.
Before the end of September, so that's the one we should probably be discussing, the full budget then.
Yeah.
This is the last department budget, eh?
And at our next council meeting, we will look at the, the whole general fund budget.
I think that's a good plan.
So for the meeting in a couple of weeks, then, should we shoot for?
Twelve.
On twelve, I was going to say fifteen, you want to try twelve?
I'd be more comfortable with it, but I'm, yes, these guys do, I don't know, fifteen, that's getting, that's.
Why don't you bring this in, twelve and fifty, or twelve and fifteen, twelve and fifteen, whatever, just to.
Sewer, yeah.
We can always say, yeah, well, that's high yet, we can always go down and say, well, a little less.
Yep, and like John had said, we have until December to finalize the budget, we just, I want it to be a decent figure.
You want enough room so we can wiggle between now and then?
Correct. Yep.
And by, by December, that's when we have to make decisions?
Yep, middle or.
By then we should.
Put it a little less.
Our, our, uh, inflation rate for this coming into the first year will be.
We should all have, right?
We're trying to stabilize and some of the things, some of the signs and the factors are indicating that it's leveled off at the six to nine percent. Uh, energy, uh, food, some of these things have leveled off and not increasing anymore.
Right.
So if they continue their trend, by December, we may be down to that eight or nine, then we can look at a little more closely.
Mm-hmm.
So, right, yeah, I like that idea.
We'll have a work session.
Probably.
We could, uh, we've had them in like October, November in the past.
Right.
We could do something like that.
Yep, yep, I like that idea too.
We just have to have.
We wanted to start the next meeting.
Yeah, because we need to have a preliminary of numbers done. And that was, I was going to add and make this suggestion since it's kind of the same breath here, but the last meeting in September, I would suggest. But the last meeting in September, I would suggest the council just cancel that meeting. We're going to have, we really won't be able to get an agenda out to you for that council meeting because a few of us will be at training.
I don't know if there'd be an emergency, I mean, we'll just.
As long as we take care of what we need to, next meeting.
On the next meeting.
Then I think we're, we're safe there.
Yeah, we could make that.
We do not need to deal with this next meeting.
Yep.
We can make that up with a work session if we, you know, somewhere down the line if they.
Yep.
I mean, it's not a meeting, but we can go over the budget.
Good. So next, next meeting, we're going to do the preliminary?
Yep, the 12.
Okay.
All right.
All right. That's what we just went over is review tax levy resolution for September meeting.
Yep, that was what we just talked about.
Any other motions?
I don't have anything else.
What's the adjournment?
Yeah, second.